Some of you that are familiar with Georgetown University, their Center for Workforce Development, they do great work, but we, in the work that we do and in the course of the work, we've just done it on our own and realized that we are developing a repository of information and data that is helping us and helping our programs at the college. So, we've reached a plateau now, we're at the same kind of point, you know, we've created positive expectations in this community that Long Beach City College can assist and deliver, and that's important to the community. We've learned how to work well with business and industry. We're connecting the parts that are needed between students, workforce development, business, and the community, and bottom line, that's really what it's about. If you can connect all those pieces, make sure that they're all working well, then everything that we do and all of the parts that we're involved in and serve will work. And I'll just put this out there very boldly to the trustees and to the board, this is kind of a decision time to take a look at these things and see, are we going to go on to the next level? Are we going to continue to push the envelope and to be innovative in the work that we do? So, before I open it up for questions, if you don't mind, I would like, I'd like to ask my, my college advancement economic development people to stand. I want to acknowledge them for such amazing work that they do. I've had the honor to work with them day in and day out, and, you know, I was teaching at one point them, and now they're all teaching me, and so I want to thank them publicly for everything that they've done for the college and for our community. But with that, I think I'll, I'll close and give you all a chance to ask questions if you have any.
Thank you, Vice President Bynum. Questions? Trustee Zia?
I have a whole bunch, so if trustee Malauulu wants to go first, I'm happy to yield my minute for a bit, though.
Thank you, thank you. First of all, Vice President Bynum and staff, thank you very much for the work that you guys do. It is definitely a much-needed service that you provide, not only to the college but to the community, and I commend you for what you do. The department that you all represent has a solid reputation throughout Long Beach and, of course, nationally with the different programs, so we're very proud of that. Thank you. I have a couple of questions. In looking at the information that you presented today, I don't see the answers to the questions that I have, so, you know, you can tell me if, you know, or at some other time, however it works best for you, but I've looked through this presentation guide, and the most glaring thing that stands out to me is I just don't see, because you're such an integral part of the college, I don't see a direct relationship to our students. And maybe it's just I don't know where to look, maybe it's here somewhere, but what percentage of the services that you provide, and I know that you represent kind of twofold, workforce development and the economic development, what percentage of that actually has our students involved, our faculty involved? What percentage is staffed by our classified staff? And there's a reason why I'm asking that, and I'll jump to that. In being constantly present on campus and in speaking to people on campus, the one comment that I hear frequently with regard to workforce development and economic development is that it just seems that that component of the college is such a separate entity, and it's almost like you guys are on an island, and I don't mean that in a negative way. It just feels as if there's a very strong disconnect. And I've actually asked people about it, and nobody really knows, and it could be that they don't care to take the time to find out, or they're not familiar with the work that you do, but it seems like a lot of people don't know. It's a, it's a very common phrase, like, "I don't know what they do." I know they do something with small business, and maybe it's because they're not taking the time to find out, or maybe because information is not readily available, but, you know, in that vein, how much of what you do involves students? Do you have classes that our students can take through economic development or workforce development? Are your programs staffed by our faculty? Just because the impression that some people have is that you guys are off on your own doing your own thing, but you're not really a part of the college, so to speak. So, maybe you can speak to that, and show me where that is, you know, if it's there.
Yeah. Thank you for that question. Actually, that's a question that I've heard every year that I've been here, and there's a, there's some parts to the answer. One of the things about workforce development is a lot of the funding is directed very specifically to a particular purpose in the community for a regional industry purpose. So, every program that we run in workforce development, we can't necessarily connect it to the college, but we do, and we have in the past connected programs to the college. We've worked with the electrical area, you know, we did curriculum for one of our federal grants with our computer office systems program for cybersecurity, and I think that also led to a renewed interest in the department, and now there's a cybersecurity faculty member. We've worked very frequently with our allied health and nursing programs. We ran a phlebotomy program as a not-for-credit program initially to test it out, to see if allied health was interested in it, and now it's been incorporated into the program. Our electrical area, we were approached by technicians in the county to take a look, to see if we could do training on signal systems. That's the lighting that's on the intersections and synchronize them. We worked with our electrical program area, they instituted a credit certificate program to be able to work with us. So, if there's an opportunity to do that, we want to do that, and we do do that. We often, we've also done contract education, credit-based contract education in the past that is a closed, contract education is a closed program, and we've done that for a number of businesses, but the faculty have worked with us, and they've agreed on the person who's hired, and they've allowed credit for those programs. One of the things we're doing with the strategic plan and the alignment is to identify more points of contact where we can do that. Some of the struggle has been, there's a lot of changes in leadership for years. Economic development was kind of pushing these things, and we need administrative advocates, we need faculty advocates in the program to be able, and champions to be able to make those things happen. We've had faculty, our first master teacher in our Goldman Sachs program was in our business program and helped us to launch the curriculum and was master teacher with us for about three years. We have adjunct faculty that work in that program as well. One of our adjunct faculty right now is working with us to put the International Business Accelerator in place. He's very excited about it, and he's getting input from the rest of the faculty. That's one, the student portal, well, let me back up for a second. Students are very interested in entrepreneurship and the kinds of things that we do. So, the youth entrepreneurship program, we don't run that specific program anymore. We stopped about a year and a half ago, but we've had 600 graduates in that program. About 40% of those students have come from Long Beach City College, and that was a mini-compressed program for students to learn how to own their own business and what they need to know to run their own business. The student portal that we're putting in place this fall is probably the most significant thing, I think, that we have been able to do with students, because they will come onboard and work directly with companies in an applied learning environment to help them solve their problems that will allow the companies to get to the next step in global business.
As paid employees or internships?
They'll be paid for it. They'll be paid as student interns, but, you know, the idea is to make them have decent pay. We just started an entrepreneurship club. One of our members of the SBDC under Pat and I and his team started the Student Entrepreneurship Club, working with ASB, and we had a student pitch last semester where we had eight students come in and pitched their idea for their new businesses. We will continue that. But, you know, we have to look for ways to connect all the time. I think this, the strategic plan and the alignment will help us to do that. Molly Smith, Dean Smith, has been incredible because she understands economic workforce development, she sees the value, and so she's been a very good partner and collaborator since she's been onboard, helping us to find those contact points.
Thank you, thank you. If, you don't have to do it right now, but at some point, maybe you can provide information to the board or even just to me, what percentage of the population that you serve is students? What percentage of the employees that work in your department are our own faculty or our own classified? That would be information that I would appreciate.
Yeah. We actually, in the past, had more faculty working in our area, but there's some compliance requirements in the state that, you know, if you're already an employee at the college and an employee for us, then there's some restrictions about that, but those things we try to work through. We also have about 10 to 15 interns all over the programs in economic development every semester as well.
Well, thank you.
If I can add one thing, trustee Malauulu, one of the biggest misconceptions over time that happens in not just Long Beach City College, but any college that has a large economic and workforce development program is that there isn't an understanding of the third mission of the California Community Colleges. The third mission is economic and workforce development, and that is specifically designed to target displaced workers in the community, workers in the community looking for employment that may or may not have anything to do with the college. And these are usually courses that are quick turnaround. They're usually funded through either state employment agencies, Department of Labor, and so there is, sometimes many of these programs, particularly during the recession, were funded federally. And so, since they didn't, so, at a time when the college is actually reducing in size, contracting, economic development was growing because of the tremendous investment the federal government was making in trying to reach displaced workers. So, what happens is faculty and staff see a disconnect because they're not directly involved with these programs, but the nature of the program is to create employment in the community. So, that's something, I think, as a board, it's helpful to understand that third mission of the California Community Colleges, that really, in some ways, has nothing to do with students or faculty. It has everything to do with the local economy. And yes, I think a program like Luann's, they've made specific efforts to include our own faculty in the delivery of those programs, and sometimes there are departments where that makes sense, sometimes there are departments where that doesn't make sense, but at the end of the day, we are tasked for delivering these programs in the community, and they're specifically community-focused, which I think we can always do a better job of communicating on campus why these are important to the community, even though they may not be enough information about how they're connected to the college.
Yeah, if I may, President Oakley, that's, that's a good point. We have two large grants right now that are Trade Adjustment Act grants. They're specifically targeted to international business and international trade areas where workers may have been laid off or can't find jobs, and so, once you get a grant, this is a Department of Labor grant, so, they're very prescriptive, they're very specific about what the deliverables are, they're very specific sometimes about the populations that you can serve, and so, you know, to President Eloy's point, you know, we have to respond to that as well. You know, our, our challenge is to make sure that we're not just doing, you know, one category or area, that we're able to look at all the opportunities that are out there for funding, to be able to see if there's other areas where we can fund and be able to seed perhaps, and we've done that, seed some capacity in instructional programs at the college.
Thank you, thank you.
Trustee Zia?
All right, let's see if this works. Thank you, Luann, this was fantastic. I have to tell you, this sector and your area has a special place in my heart, it's one of the reasons why I ran for office, and I would agree with President Oakley. The third mission is often forgotten, and not many people in the community know about that. I'm constantly out there telling folks, we have this program. A lot of folks don't even know that we run, I mean, I'm talking about average, everyday people, that we run the SBDC program out of LBCC, and so, one of the things that I've been doing is trying to broadcast that a little bit more, but that's one of my questions is that how are we amplifying that point so that more community members are finding out about it along with the students? That's one of my questions. I have a lot of questions I have to tell you, so apologies in advance, and I'll go one at a time, so if you want.
That's a great question. We did actually a survey, it's been about two and a half years now, about economic development programs in our community, to see what people knew about them. They knew about our programs, they knew about the SBDC network, they knew about the Goldman Sachs program, they even knew about some of the training programs, we didn't workforce development, they didn't know they were tied to Long Beach City College, and we struggle with that a lot. One of the issues for us, just from a divisional standpoint, is when we get funding, there's no money in the funding for marketing, so we have to find creative ways to be able to get the word out. Our strategy really, in its outreach with the partners, the business partners that we have, is to connect with them so they can help be a pipeline for new entrants in the workforce, underemployed, unemployed, and refer them to us. So, that's part of the business engagement, but the strategic communications plan that you all approved and we did last year, there was some information in that about what people knew and didn't know, and it was clear in that plan as well that there's some work to do about communicating and promoting the availability of these programs to people in the community.
Okay. And you mentioned about different sectors and disciplines. Are we putting some effort into expanding that? And you mentioned about the city, joining forces with the city. What are some of those sectors that we're targeting, or are we looking at what kind of growth it could bring to our communities, those kind of touchpoints? Is that something you can share with us?
Yes, so, you know, we can't be everything to everybody, and we don't want to be. We want to be very good at the things that we can do, and we want to make sure that the programs that we're focusing on are the programs that are actually the current and emerging sectors in our own region. So, if you take a look at our own region, one of the biggest drivers, of course, is the port of Long Beach, the port of LA, and it isn't just containers on and off a ship. It's transportation, it's advanced transportation, it's alternative fuels technology, advanced manufacturing technology, our Career Pathways Trust Grant has a focus on that as well. We have a major healthcare sector. We've been very fortunate to get a lot of funding for our allied health and our nursing programs in the past, there's, there's usually funding available for that. So, the, so the challenge is to make sure that we are at the table with the industry sector representatives in those industry sectors, and we're able to be able to respond to what they need, when they need it, as things are changing and evolving in the workplace. And so, we focus on advanced transportation technology, we focus on international trade, we focus on alternative fuels, you know, we have a focus on healthcare. Business development is a part of all of that, and every business in those sectors needs help, and so, that's part of the wraparound that we do with that. We have a lot of financial services here in Long Beach, people don't really realize that, it's kind of a, flies under the radar screen, but one of the things we're looking at is looking at technology needs. Healthcare and nursing and healthcare in general is going to be booming in IT and the need for people to be able to look at data and share that data. So, that, that challenges us from a workforce standpoint, you know, is this something that we need to do, and is this conversations we need to have with our faculty about what that might look like in our curriculum as we put things together?
It sounds like we're also exploring and supporting construction industry with the pre-apprenticeship program, and that's around, out of your shop, correct? And is it a free program?
It is, right now, because we've got grant funding, you know, so, one of the things that my staff works on hard and does very well in is finding additional funds to keep those programs going, but we had Trade Adjustment Act funding to kickstart that grant, so that pre-apprenticeship program has been really successful. There's three or four areas that we're focusing on. We got what's called an industry-driven regional collaborative grant from the chancellor's office a year ago to be able to continue the funding for that, but down the road, we won't be able to do that unless we've got a way to be able to work with business. Business Now is working with us to come to the table as a consortium and pay membership fees to be able to place people in the seats of the training programs in those programs, and they'll fund them themselves. And we'll, of course, continue to look for grant funds, but, you know, ultimately, we want businesses to step up to the table too and not expect everything to be free, and so, you know, that's, that's where we're gonna, that's one of the things we're going to be trying out next year, is a consortium of businesses to continue some of the trades training.
So, it's free for this current year?
It's free right now for the participants in the program.
And it's accessible to anybody who wants to get into the construction industry?
It's accessible, and we have a commitment by the unions and the Building Trades to take our students, and I'm happy to say that they're doing it. We've got a pipeline now of graduates in the program that are applying to the unions, and they're getting accepted. You know, we've had 11 people get accepted so far, which is great because those jobs are here, they're local, they're good jobs, they're continuous jobs, so, that's been a really good partnership.
Okay, great. And on your--
Trustee Zia, could I ask a question about that? Do you, do they have to have a certificate in order to get into the pre-apprenticeship program?
No.
No? So, if they're in the trade, a trade area, they could apply for--
Yeah, that curriculum too is the curriculum that comes from Building Trades, so, you know, we're pleased that they're willing to share that curriculum with us because it's an excellent curriculum, but, you know, not everybody's going to get into the union.
Sure.
So, participants in that program will graduate out and go get other jobs too, and we'll track the differences in that as well.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because we have a mutual student in mind that would really benefit from that, and that goes to trustee Malauulu's point, and perhaps we can support you and advocate for the messaging to the students and that they can have an opportunity to go to the pre-apprenticeship programs and get into the unions.
I want to, I want to acknowledge, if I might, our ASB students, because they've been great about getting information out to the students about the entrepreneurship club, as well as the opportunities in the student lab, the portal lab, that we're going to be matching them with businesses. They've been amazing.
On your page 10 on the slide presentation, there is participants trained, the number from in the past five years, and also, page 11, job placement numbers. How many are in Long Beach, and how many of those were students that--
Well, there's no, this, these economic, this is the SBDC on page 10, so there's very few students in those programs. These are local businesses in the three-county area, because we have a responsibility for LA, Ventura and Santa Barbara, so, I don't know. I think we probably do have some students, because I know students have visited the SBDC, and we've had faculty come and use services, but we can get that information for you. And I'm sorry, what was the other question?
How many of these businesses and participants that we've trained were in Long Beach?
I, we can get that information for you. I can tell you that when we started the SBDC network, when we awarded the grants, one of the things we did was write in an SBDC center in Long Beach, and actually, we wanted to have an SBDC in Long Beach, and the only way we could get it was to get the grant for the entire LEED Center, but our SBDC in Long Beach has had the highest performing metrics since it's been in place in the entire network, and we can break that out for you and get it to you. But that's designed specifically, and we do a lot of work at 309 Pine to do outreach to our businesses downtown, and we work in North Long Beach, and we work in Spanish, and we do some courses and work in Camer.
Yeah, I have to tell you, I am constantly trying to poach businesses in my network to come and take advantage of what we have, because it's free, correct? And it's, the performance measures for your team is based on how many people they support, correct? So, just as an FYI, in fact, one of our students who is a veteran, one of the students that was a scholarship recipient, took advantage of one of the courses that I believe the person before Ted Hyde was leading, Mike, so it really benefited him. On your, slide 11, why was the Perkins VTEA moved to Academic Affairs?
What's that?
On slide 11?
Well, we've had some transitions in leadership in Academic Affairs the last few years we've had. We now have a permanent vice president onboard who is interested in working more closely with vocational education, the outcomes for-- VTEA is, is the Carl Perkins Federal Grant money that the college gets through the state. Because of that, we have an interest in being able to run that. Ideally, you should have VTEA probably sitting under Academic Affairs, but when I started here, we just didn't have the impetus or the leadership at the time, so we did it in economic development and kept it going. Same thing with our Career Pathways Trust Grant. You know, that really is a guided, that looks at guided pathways, and it's designed to really connect with the instructional programs, so it's really much more appropriate for the CPT grant to sit either in Academic Affairs or Student Services than it would be in my area. So, that's why they were, they were moved over because of that.
Well, I like hearing the great partnership and the relationship with our Academic Affairs vice president and the team, so it's really great to hear that. On your page 12 on the slide presentation, I did a quick rough math as far as the statistics that was provided, the number of Long Beach businesses, this is for this Goldman Sachs 10,000 Small Business Initiative. It seems like there's only 12% in Long Beach. Are we going to be focusing on increasing that and focusing more in supporting Long Beach businesses and growing that, and are there efforts in place that we're focusing on in that regard?
Yes, and that's a really good question. First of all, just let me share with you, the Goldman Sachs program is technically entitled the Southern California Regional Goldman Sachs Program, so it's designed to serve the five-county area in Southern California. We also administer a program at LA Community College, and people, we do recruiting for both programs. We have people that have come from Northern California, we've had people come from out of the state, but we recruit for both programs, and we have people that are onboard in our offices. Vivian Shumoyama is our executive director. They do specific outreach and recruiting here in Long Beach, and we've had some really good success stories, but it's like anything else, you know, we advertise that people come in, it's a very, it's not, I guess it's a, it's a bit of a complicated, it's a, it's a challenging application process because people not only get screened at, here in California, the applications go back to New York, and then they make decisions at the Goldman Sachs Foundation about the viability of applicants, and so, you know, we just have to make sure that we get a pipeline as much as we can with our own businesses, but we've had some amazing stories about businesses in Long Beach.
Right. So, that's only specific to the Goldman Sachs, they have some parameters that may be a little bit more stringent than a typical startup, correct? Because we help startups as well, and then some of the aid we give them is like writing a business plan, is that one of the areas or--
Well, Goldman Sachs scholars, we call them scholars, are more advanced in their business, and so, part of what, and this is a good point, because part of what we're trying to do is put a continuum of services together, no matter where a business is sitting on the scale. So, a startup might go to our SBDC, or a business that's been in place for a while might go to the SBDC. Goldman Sachs businesses have a profile where they have to be at least a business for two years, they have to have a couple employees, they have to have revenues of anywhere from $450,000 to, I don't know, we go up to about $4 or $5 million, I think, in the program. The whole point of that program is that a company puts together a growth plan that literally launches them into the next phase of their business. The SBDC will take startup businesses, they will take businesses that have been in place for a couple, three years, businesses that just may come and they have a problem with a particular aspect of their business, it might be the marketing, it might be the technology pieces, it might be HR kinds of related issues, and so, it's got a different kind of scope in that program.
And then, this 56% of the alumni who have created jobs, do we have that disaggregated as far as how many were creating jobs in Long Beach, or how many jobs were created in Long Beach?
So, what we're doing, Goldman Sachs has a policy where they take all of the metrics, they have their own software system, they aggregate it, and then they put out a national report. So, we are backing out our own Long Beach-area-based numbers and data, and that's been an ongoing discussion with the staff about how we can do that, not step over the toes of our funders, but at the same time, we have to be able to provide information that shows economic impact in our own area. that shows economic impact in our own area.
That's great. The next slide, you talk about student success, and you touched on this, vice president, executive vice president, Bynum, as far as the student, the practical hands-on training. I, I'm just trying to understand, how, how does this look like, the mechanics, like it leads directly to jobs? Do we sit back and assess and look at industries, needs? And then also, do we have some tangible data points that we could say, "Look, we placed students in these sectors or with these businesses, and it led to X percentage of success." I'm just trying to make it a little bit more palatable to understand for myself. What does that mean? How, how do we do this? Focus on practical hands-on training and learning that leads directly to jobs for our students?
So, most of the workforce training that we do is very applied. And so it's designed to teach somebody a specific skill set, or to upgrade their skills, or introduce a brand-new skill that is something that the employer or the industry is seeking. So when you talk about, so we have a lot of applied programs as well at the college, but we've got programs that go for a semester, you know, a degree might be two years. A certificate might take longer. A lot of the work that we do in workforce development is short-term, it's compressed, and it's very, very applied in problem-solving, certain things on, in the workplace. With a student, you know, with, with our students, for example, in the portal, they're going to be taking very-